Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to order. I would like to announce that we will be going into executive session at the close of the first part of our public meeting and that we will, in all likelihood, reconvene after the public, after the executive session in a second public section. I want to read the following notice into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds public hearings, additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meeting. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to switch off his or her cellphone? Thank you very much. As usual, CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed on the CUNY website. On behalf of the Board, I would like to warmly welcome trustee Peter S. Pantaleo, who was appointed by Governor Patterson and unanimously confirmed by the State Senate. As a member of CUNY's Business Leadership Council, he has been working closely with the university, in many ways beneficial to us. Mr. Pantaleo is a prominent attorney, partner at DLA Piper, and his extensive experience is a stroke of good luck for all of, for our Board. Trustee Pantaleo, welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chancellor Goldstein, it's an honor to be asked to and to actually serve on this Board, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much. It's also a pleasure to welcome Mr. Ruse Benazari, who as interim USS Chair replaces Mr. Robert Ramos as the student trustee. Mr. Benazari is a PhD candidate in civil engineering at the Graduate Center, where he works on the development of an advanced technique for mapping and monitoring sea and lake ice. Welcome, Mr. Benazari. It's a pleasure, look forward to working with you on the Board. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this great opportunity. I'll be honored to do anything for the City University of New York, and thank you very much for having me.
Very well. Thank you. I would also like to welcome Dr. Jillian Small, the new Vice Chancellor for Research at the table in her new capacity. Welcome to you, Jillian. We look forward to working with you. On behalf of my fellow Board members, I would like to express our deepest condolences to the family and friends of former trustee and Baruch College alumnus Jerome Berg, who passed away on July 21st, 2008. Mr. Berg served CUNY with great distinction from 1994 to 1997, including as Chair of the Board's Committee on Academic Policy Program and Research. Also on behalf of all my fellow Board members, I would like to express our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Hunter College alumnus Dr. Joseph Schenker, who passed away last Saturday morning, September 20th. Dr. Schenker was the founding president of LaGuardia Community College. He held a number of major posts at this university, including as Acting President of Hunter College, Acting President of Kingsborough Community College, CUNY's Dean of Community Colleges, and Acting Vice Chancellor for Faculty and Staff Relations. He served as President of the Banks Creek Street School of Education and launched the first middle college high school in the United States during his tenure at LaGuardia Community College. This past spring, the Board unanimously approved a resolution recommended by President Gail Mello and Chancellor Goldstein to name the main building at LaGuardia Community College, Joseph Schenker Hall. During the past three years, Dr. Schenker worked with CUNY to establish student scholarships through private foundation support in honor of Julia C.C. Edelstein and Albert H. Baucher at Hunter College and the Graduate Center respectively. Dr. Schenker had recently retired as Provost of the CW Post Campus of Long Island University. The Office of the Secretary has circulated information to all of you about services in his memory being held later this week. It's my pleasure to announce that Dr. Leonard Kleinrock, former City College alumnus, has been selected by President George W. Bush to receive the nation's highest scientific honor, the National Medal of Science. A distinguished professor of computer science at UCLA, he is considered to be the father of the Internet. And indeed, the sender, the sender of the first, first ever email in 1969. Congratulations to Dr. Kleinrock. Also a pleasure to note that trustee Wellington Chen received a community service award from the New York chapter of the Organization of Chinese Americans at their 32nd anniversary gala on September 19th. Congratulations, trustee Chen. And trustee Kathleen Pacilli will receive the distinguished service award from the College of Staten Island Alumni Association at a special event celebrating the first convocation of CSI President Tomas Morales. Congratulations. I would like to announce that the Association of Community College Trustees will hold its 39th Annual Leadership Congress here in New York City at the Marriott Marquis from Wednesday, October 29th to Saturday, November 1st. Trustee Kathleen Pacilli is working diligently as our Board's representative to the Association. She will chair a roundtable conference session on the CUNY Model for Financial Stability, a shared perspective, on Thursday, October 30th, from 1:45 to 3:00 p.m., featuring Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malavi and all of our community college presidents. Vice Chairman Philip Berry will be keynote speaker at the closing general session brunch on Saturday, November 1st. If any trustees would like to attend this Congress, please contact the Office of the Secretary. You have information about it in your trustee materials. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal? She is here. I will substitute for Valerie then and announce college and faculty honors. CUNY TV Nueva York co-host Carmen Bellosa was awarded the 2008 Kefi Quishan Prize, one of Spain's most distinguished literary awards, for her forthcoming novel El Complot de los Romanticos, to be published in 2009. Ms. Bellosa's manuscript was chosen from among 596 submissions, and she is the first Mexican ever to receive this prestigious award. Congratulations to her. Baruch College professor Bin Chen was awarded a William Diaz Fellowship as one of four fellows who received fellowships from the Nonprofit Academic Centers Council in 2008. This fellowship is designed to advance the work of faculty of color who teach and conduct research in philanthropic and nonprofit sector studies. Congratulations. City College Herbert M. Kaiser, professor of mechanical engineering, Latif Gigi, received the 2008 Ralph Coats Row Award from the American Society for Engineering Education Civil Engineering Division. And City College Henry Simat, professor of theoretical physics, Michio Kaku, received the 2008 Kloppsteg Memorial Award from the American Association of Physics Teachers. Congratulations. Hunter College Political Science Associate Professor Roger Carapin received the Charles Tilly Award for his book Protest Politics in Germany: Movements on the Left and Right since the 1960s. And Hunter Psychology Professor Jeffrey Parsons was awarded the Distinguished Scientific Contribution Award for 2008 by the Society for the Psychological Study of Lesbian, Gay, and Bisexual Issues of the American Psychological Association. Congratulations. Associate Dean of Academic Affairs and Professor of Political Science at Kingsborough Community College, Riza Fakari, was recently elected Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Student World Assembly by the organization's board. That concludes my report. I'd now like to call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nine of nine women undergraduates who received education grants from New York Women's Forum at its second colloquium on September 11th, 2008, were CUNY students. They are Rebecca Backman of Brooklyn College, Melinda Cornwell of Hunter College, Alisa Berger of LaGuardia Community College, Judy Canastrale and Wanda Vargas of Lehman College, Andrea Balbas and Mindy Burton of Queens College, and Cassandra Ketting and Susan Holmes of the College of Staten Island. Congratulations. A team of students from Baruch College's Zicklin School of Business won a gold and honorable mention for Best Marketing Strategy Presentation at the Direct Marketing Educational Foundation 2008 Collegiate Awards. Congratulations, Baruch. Twenty-one Queensborough Community College students recently presented their research findings at the National American Chemical Society at the 236th National American Chemical Society Exposition in Philadelphia. This is a significant achievement, as this venue is usually reserved for students at baccalaureate and graduate levels. Congratulations, and this concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. You have a list of the grants and gifts received by the university since our June 23rd, 2008 meeting. That list is on the table and in the trustee's calendar book as well. May I now call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize to the Board. This will be something of a, a long report because there have been extraordinary events going on in the last several weeks and certainly over the summertime that I feel obligated to report on. Let me first begin by echoing Chairman Schmidt's very warm words about Joseph Schenker, who was a dear friend of mine, someone who did extraordinary work at this university. His, his passing has shocked so many of us who knew him so well, and we will miss him dearly. And Jerome Berg, who I had the pleasure of working with when I was President of Baruch College and he was on the Board, was a very, very deeply committed trustee to the welfare of this university, and we were very saddened to, to see his passing. I'm delighted to see trustee Peter Pantaleo. And Peter, it's wonderful to have you on the Board, and we look forward to working with you. And Ruse Benazari, I'm very interested in your work at the Graduate School, and I'm sure that you will bring distinction to the role of a student trustee as well. This has been a very active summer. First, I want to thank the, the Executive Committee of this Board for being patient with me when I asked that we convene to discuss serious issues that we were facing at the university, and I appreciate the time that you gave to redo some of your vacations to allow us to convene and to, to consider some of the matters that we brought before you. Mr. Chairman, the summertime is a busy time for me in that I do all of the performance reviews for the Presidents and the Vice Chancellors. This is about a six-week process that culminates close to a year of work of data collection that is coordinated between a campus and the central administration. And I just want to say publicly to the Presidents in particular, it's, it is truly a pleasure to work with all of them. These are very fine women and men who work tirelessly on behalf of their campuses, and when you look closely at the data, as I do each summer, you realize how far so many of our campuses have come, and I, I think the Board really ought to acknowledge certainly the, the very fine work that our Presidents and Vice Chancellors do. As a result of the, of the performance review, we do have an adopted executive compensation plan, and raises were proposed for this Board, for Presidents and members of the Chancellery, and I just want the Board to, to know that they are driven largely by the performance of the campuses, and they will be considered later in the meeting. Our full enrollment is, continues to be very, very strong. We anticipate having about a 4.3% headcount increase and a 5% increase in FTEs. The, the number that I look at very closely is the FTE increase because that really is probably one of the best initial lenses on retention and our ability to get our students through the system and onto their, their degrees. We have almost 10,000 additional degree credit students, and I'm very pleased to tell the Board that this fall in 2008, we have the highest SAT scores at a group of our top-tier institutions that we have had since the existence of this university. And it's a great tribute to the reputation of the institution, the coming home of students of very fine ability who are looking at this university as a place to really shape their professionals, professional and personal goals, and I'm delighted to see that, that very strong mark as one indicator of, of high performance. We talk about the large numbers of degree-seeking students that we are enrolling, but we have an extraordinary number of adult and continuing education students that are studying at this university as well, and our latest count indicates that we have exceeded for the first time over 270,000 students in our adult and continuing education programs. I'm not going to spend a lot of time waxing about the events of the last year. I have specifically about the financial markets, the credit markets in particular. I have talked with the Presidents for well over a year about the so-called storm clouds that we were seeing and the potential for these storm clouds to have very serious effect on this university. No way did I ever anticipated that the problems would be as deep and as complex as they are. We are in a very dynamic environment that will, that has the potential of having very serious consequences for the state and the city, and by extension to the university as well. I, I will assure all of you that with the strong leadership that we have in this university, a very fine Board and Presidents and members of the Chancellery, we will get through this. It may be a little tough at times. It's possible that the Governor will bring back the Legislature soon to consider whether the adopted budget that we are operating under now will hold for the rest of the fiscal year, and if not, what kind of remediation would have to be provided, either through additional revenue or further contraction, contraction in expenditures. I don't know if that will happen, but with the, the data that I have seen and the people that I have talked with, there is high likelihood that there will need to be some reexamination of that budget. Of course, for next year, we expect a year that will be a real challenge to all of us. It's a little early to know the financial plan of the state for the Governor's executive budget, which will tentatively be released about the third week in January, but obviously we are having continuing talks with the, with the Governor, with the Secretary to the Governor, with the head of the division of the budget, all people informing the structure of the expenditure areas, and certainly we will keep this Board very prized. Let me just go over briefly with all of you, and I've reported on this before, but I think it, it's helpful to report it again. You do know that we had two budget cuts at our senior colleges. The first, when the adopted budget was enacted in April, we had close to an $18 million cut and, at our senior colleges, and we were able to work with that cut pretty effectively with small reductions in our OTPS area, some university-wide lump sum accounts that we had to dip into, and a vacancy control program that we instituted. But last month, the Governor called back the state legislature because things started to unravel very quickly, and as a result of that, we were faced with an additional $50.6 million over the original $17.7 million. Now, I want the Board to know that this administration was not sitting idly over the course of many months. When I first addressed the Presidents maybe 15 months ago and talked about some rumblings that we were seeing in the fixed income and mortgage-backed security areas that potentially had problems ahead for the state, Ernesto Malavi and Alan Dobrin worked together to start providing some buffer that we started to build into the budget very, very methodically and very quietly, just as a preventive measure in anticipation that there will be some additional problems in the budget, and sure enough, there were. Because of our ability to identify one-time-only resources and alternative ways to handle some of the accounting that we utilized at the university, we were able to offset about $32 million off that $50 million that was totally unaware to the campuses. Campuses did not see the effect of that because it really did not affect our core business at all. That left us with about $18.6 million, and we have worked with the campuses to again protect the core business of the university. And by the core business, what, what I mean by that is largely the faculty that we place in the classroom, the counselors that are working with our students, the very, very basic services that this university is based upon. And as a result of that, we were able to, along with an encumbrance very early when the budget was adopted, of about 1.5%, which I asked Vice Chancellor Malavi to implement into the expenditure plan, we were able to deal effectively with that budget, again, without our core being touched. There were no cuts in our community college-based aid or in the, the state's tuition assistance program. Much of this was about very, very candid and serious conversations with Laura Anglin, who is the, the Director of the DOB, with Charles O'Byrne, the Secretary to the Governor, and with the Governor himself, talking about the way in which the university can indeed work through some of its problems. So I think, I think all of us should feel a sense of comfort that we manage this very effectively, and as a result, I think there's been very, very little disruption. And again, the number we started with was over $68 million, and we, we've done really well. What will happen on a going-forward basis is yet a very different chapter in the way that the university will be able to manage its affairs, but we're going to have to wait to see how some of this unravels, if it, if it unravels at all. The Mayor's adopted budget issued in June reduced the city's support for our community colleges up slightly under $8 million. We're awaiting the city's next financial plan adjustments, which will be taking place in the next several weeks. I anticipate that there will be further cuts that we will see when the Mayor presents his financial plan, and we will work very closely with the Mayor and the Deputy Mayors to ensure, to the degree that we can, that again, our core business, this time at the community colleges, are held out of harm's way. I've been in communication with the Board several times about the status of Fitterman Hall. This has been a torturous journey. It is still not done yet. This is a $324 million program. We have taken above the line from that cost about $82 million that we received from a variety of sources, including insurance and some of the monies provided through other sources as well. The state, that left, that leaves us with about $242 million, and we are in discussions, very serious discussions now. As you know, a community college requires half the contribution by the state, half the contribution by the city, which is very different, the way in which the capital programs work for the senior colleges. I'm hopeful that this important project will get done. I want to thank Antonio Perez, who's been indefatigable in getting the word out and being very, very supportive, clearly of his campus, Iris Wanschall, Vice Chancellor Iris Wanschall, who has done just fabulous work in thinking and the most Weinsholl, who has done just fabulous work in thinking in the most creative ways about how we can get this, this project finally completed. And again, I'm hopeful that we will succeed. Mr. Chairman, I've been concerned about the financial events that we've seen roar through this country, especially in the last five to six weeks, but incrementally over the past several months and indeed almost the, the year. As a result of that, I have established three working groups that I'd like to talk about for just a minute. The three working groups are, first, a budget working group. I've asked Vice Chancellor Malave to, with, with some support from individuals around the campus, around the university, to take a look at every single item we expend funds to support. Nothing left off the table, to really take a very fresh look at how we expend funds and the things that we expend funds for. The reason we need to do this is that this is a big and complex organization. We're spending now about two point three billion dollars a year at this university, and I think at times like this, we ought to know what the opportunities are for this university to operate in a different way with respect to how we expend money and on what items we expend money on. No decisions are being made. This is really nothing more than due diligence to be looking very closely at the way in which this university operates. I've asked Iris Weinsholl to take a look at our physical assets at this university and see what kinds of physical assets we can have that can be monetized, and how the dollars associated with that analysis could be reshaped potentially to offset opportunities that we would no longer have because of expenditure reductions. Iris is working her way through all of our physical assets, and what I mean by physical assets are air rights that we may be able to develop value in, development rights, things that, that we procure in our capital programs, which are varied and complex and deep, to see how this university may operate in a different way in certain areas to free up cash, hopefully on an ongoing basis, if not just on a one-time basis, to deal with particular issues that we may have in our operating budget. And lastly, I've asked our Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel Rick Schaefer to take a look at our bylaws, our contracts that we have, the Civil Service Commission's rules and regulations, and look deeply at those operating guidelines to see if changes could be made that the board at some point would consider to enable us to be more nimble and more attentive in a very highly changing world that we're facing here in the state and again by extension at the university. I've asked Alan Dobrin to oversee the three committees with the three senior chairmen. At some point after their work is done, we will ask members of the board to help us think through some of the items that we are looking at. I announced last week at the University Faculty Senate Governors', what is that?
Faculty Governors' Leaders.
Faculty Governors' Leaders, that we would like to bring them in, in partnership at the appropriate time, certainly the University Student Center, all, and, and of course, our presidents, starting with the Fiscal Affairs Committee of the Council of Presidents, to start responding to some of the things that we uncover through this, to assist us in managing this university in the most efficacious way that we can. Alan, do you want to say anything more at this particular point?
I don't have much more detail, but just to give you a little sense, Ernesto's committee, what we're doing is really going through the whole budget, and we're deciding what's core mission, what programs we do is supportive of the core, and then there are things that universities and other organizations pick up that have good social value, but in difficult budget times, may make a decision that those aren't critical if our budget gets much worse. And the other thing, you know, in addition to the things the chancellor mentioned that we're working with Iris's committee, is the university also has lots of assets in high-value areas of the city, and one of the things we want to do is see if it's worth selling some of those assets and being able to save money that way by providing those services in places and ways that are of lower value.
The opportunity costs are too high at this particular point in time, not to have a structure like this, Mr. Chairman, to report back and, and indicate what it is that, that we're uncovering. Let me just move on to a few other things before I complete my, my report. We will be hosting a summit on public higher education. This is something that I discussed with Vartan Gregorian, lamenting over the fact that, and I've, and the chairman, Benno Schmidt, and I have discussed this over many, many times together, the so-called bifurcation based upon wealth that is separating a group of institutions, a group of higher education institutions in the United States from another group of institutions that are less fortunate in having the kinds of very deep resources to meet the challenges that all of us are going to face over the next few years with large numbers of faculty expected to retire and a very contentious auction for universities to get the very best talent that we can to keep this important institution moving ahead. Vartan Gregorian reacted very favorably to this, and we will have on October seventeenth and eighteenth here in Manhattan, a group of some of the very top leaders in public higher education that I've contacted. All of them are very excited about the idea to work through some of these areas, and I'll certainly report back to the board on what we, what we discussed, and I think it will be lively, but more importantly, it will be important for us to, to do this. I'm delighted to say that the Professional Staff Congress of CUNY ratified their collective bargaining agreement on September third by a vote of ninety-three percent in favor of the contract. This is with the, with the university, and I want to particularly thank Vice Chancellor Pamela Silverblatt, who really came in at a very critical time to help negotiate this contract, working with Barbara Bowen, in particular, the president of the PSC, to get this contract done. We hope to resolve the outstanding contract with the Teamsters, Pamela, in the next several months, and we look forward to that. I'm also delighted to report that Governor Patterson and the New York State Board of Regents approved our new doctoral degree granting authority in the sciences to both City College and Hunter College. This is a very big deal. I want to thank President Bill Kelly, President Gregory Williams, President Jennifer Rabb, Vice Chancellor Jillian Small for making this happen. This is the first time in the history of this university that those two campuses will be given degree granting authority at the PhD level in, in the areas of biology, chemistry, biochemistry, and physics. Additionally, Hunter College and the Graduate School will offer a joint Doctor of Public Health, and City College, through its Grove School of Engineering, will grant PhDs in engineering alone. And I'm just really delighted that we were able to get this community around this approach. Manfred Philip also was very helpful, and I thank you, Manfred, for helping out at some critical points as well. It is our hope and expectation that some of our other campuses, when they are ready, will proceed down this road as well, in particular Brooklyn College, Queens College, College of Staten Island, and Lehman, to, in select areas, to get degree granting authority as well. I'm very pleased, and, and I'm going to jump ahead here, but we'll have to return to this after this board acts, that today we have the opportunity to meet Dr. Ken Olden as acting and founding dean of the CUNY School of Public Health and acting dean of the Hunter College Schools of Health Professions. I've talked about this, with this board, about the establishment of a school of public health here at the City University of New York. It'll be the first public school of public health in this region. It is a very complex enterprise. You have to have three doctoral programs in place, you have to have five master's programs in place, you have to have granted degrees in those disciplines before you are accredited. It is a very arduous and deeply complex problem to get this done, but we are fortunate in bringing, at a critical time, to this university, Dr. Ken Olden, and I will talk a little about Dr. Olden and then ask President, President Rabb to speak about him as, as well, at the time when the board acts to, to appoint this very, very distinguished man that we worked so hard to convince to come to this university to, to start this very important school. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for those of you who watched the very moving nine-eleven ceremony that took place at Ground Zero, you will have noticed that there were many students that came, that, that come from various countries around the world that mentioned the names of people that were lost in that horrific act, who came originally from that country. This was something the mayor's office had called me for assistance in, and I asked our own senior vice chancellor Jay Hertzenson and Pat Gray, who works with Jay, to, to work with each of our presidents, to develop that database of talent, and they were extraordinary. It was a very emotional few hours to hear all of these names recited, and having our students that represented eighty-five different countries around the world as part of that, this is just another example of the power of this university. That would not have been able to happen without CUNY's involvement, so I want to thank Jay in particular for working so hard, and Pat Gray, who is the director of Special Events, to make that happening, have happen. For those of you who read the New York Times on Sunday, and I expect all of you do, you would have seen a supplement on higher education, and there was a beautiful picture of Bill and Anita Newman, Bill and Anita McCauley, sorry about that, Bill and, Bill and Linda McCauley. Bill and Anita Newman are very good friends and have been very generous to this university. Wonderful photograph of Bill McCauley and his wife Linda McCauley with some of the students and faculty associated with the McCauley Honors College. We have copies for you in the, in your materials, and if you haven't seen it, I suggest that you look at it carefully. I want to commend Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave, who, with the support of Executive Vice Chancellor Alan Dobrin, put together a very successful financial management conference. Trustee Joe Loder gave a critical keynote speech and was absolutely, he captivated the audience and knocked people off their feet, said, Joe, thank you for that very good speech that you gave. And Mr. Chancellor, I'm almost done. I want to thank Vice Chancellor Gary Moore for his continuing efforts to coordinate disaster relief related to the most recent hurricanes, both here and abroad. Gary, thank you for working so diligently. Congratulations to President Jeremy Travis on being asked by the governor to chair the task force on transforming juvenile justice. Congratulations to President Edison Jackson, who will be honored at the Minority Access Ninth Role Models Conference. And lastly, commend President Tomas Morales on being awarded the Berequa College Professional Achievement Award in Education.
Are there questions for the chancellor on his report? Seeing none, we'll proceed now to the policy items that require our vote. First, I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for September twenty-second, two thousand and eight. You have copies of this report on the table. May I have a second, please?
Thank you.
Any questions about that report, Mr. Chancellor, anything you want to say?
Yes, it, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Ken Olden as, as our acting and founding dean of the new CUNY School of Public Health. As I mentioned briefly, this will be the first public health, public, public health school in this region, and it's a very exciting opportunity for this university to really concentrate on some of the very vexing problems that face urban America, and it will have its focus. I've asked President Rabb to be the lead institution. This is a CUNY-wide school, but I've asked President Rabb to be the lead institution since at Hunter, we have probably the greatest depth of very distinguished faculty in the, the areas around and in public health here at the, in, in the university. Ken Olden is an extraordinary individual who, whose bio I'd like to tell you a little about, and then I'll ask President Rabb if you would just comment a bit about Olden, Dr. Olden, in areas that I may have missed. Dr. Olden is a world-renowned cancer researcher who, for fourteen years, directed the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences at the National Institutes of Health. He was the first African-American to become director of one of the eighteen institutes of the National Institutes of Health in the history of the National Institute of Health. He has won a great many awards, including honorary degrees from six universities. From two thousand and six to two thousand and seven, he was the verbi professor, visiting professor at Harvard's School of Public Health, from which he received the Julius B. Richmond Award in Public Health in two thousand and five. This is the highest award given by the Harvard School of Public Health, and I should note that our own mayor, Bloomberg, received the same award two years later in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and four, Dr. Olden received the Sedwick, Sedwick Memorial Medal for Distinguished Service in Public Health from the American Public Health Association. The list of Dr. Olden's honors and awards goes on for many, many pages, suffice it to say that we are greatly honored that he is joining CUNY, and we look forward to the establishment of an outstanding school of public health under his-- establishment of an outstanding school of public health under his inspiring leadership. Manfred, do you want to say a couple of things?
I think just to add to that wonderful introduction, a short story. We had asked Dr. Noreen Clark, who is the former head of the Michigan School of Public Health, one of the ranking public health schools in the country, to assist us in finding somebody who was really commensurate to the position of creating this wonderful new urban school of public health. And Dr. Clark called me one day and said, I have the candidate, and if this person wants to come, I'm not finding you any other candidates. So I thought that was just a wonderful introduction, and as soon as I was privileged to meet Dr. Olden, I knew exactly what she meant, because not only is his number, his career and his awards extraordinarily distinguished, Dr. Olden is a man of great passion, and his deep personal commitment to the underserved in the field of public health is extraordinary. And I can think of no better person to fulfill the mission that you challenged all of us with three years ago, when you determined that CUNY was the place to address the urban problems of public health. And we are all committed, under Dr. Olden's leadership, to being part of the solution to the public health crisis and to become a real leader. So I want to just take a moment to thank you for conceiving of putting CUNY in this leadership role and of giving Hunter the honor of leadership. I want to thank my colleagues at Brooklyn and Lehman and the Graduate Center, who also have extraordinary faculties in the field of public health. I think we're all very excited to be working together, and also with Berequah, which has a wonderful public affairs program, who's, which is contributing. And also to thank Dr. Alexa Logue for her really inevitable help in moving us forward. As you said, this is a very complex regulatory process to create a school, and she's keeping us all on track, so we thank her very much. So it is now my pleasure to introduce somebody whose life has been devoted to improving conditions for people in the area, and, as I said, the underserved in the area of public health, and who has really privileged us with coming to New York at a time where he could have moved on in his extraordinary career and rested on laurels, has decided to tackle this really tough, inspiring challenge to which we know he will lead us all to great success. So welcome, Dr. Olden.
Thank you, thank you for these comments. Does the board have any questions for the chancellor on the, or anything else in the chancellor's university report before we vote on it? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Now I have the pleasure of welcoming Dr. Olden as the acting and founding dean of the CUNY School of Public Health and acting dean of the Hunter College Schools of the Health Professions. Welcome to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chancellor Goldstein, President Rab, members of Board of Trustees, it's a great honor to be here this afternoon, so good afternoon to all of you. I've started out in life in a little place in Tennessee because I was committed to public service, and it is that commitment that brought me to New York three or four weeks ago. So, for thirty-eight years, I ran a research laboratory, and for fourteen years, I ran a, an institute in the National Institutes of Health. And I did nothing as exciting or as potentially important as what the chancellor and the president asked me to come to New York to do. So I'm excited about the opportunity to be involved in the development of a school of public health with an urban focus. I believe there are twenty-eight other accredited public health schools in the nation, and one of those is here in New York. But none of them have urban health as their mission. And when I was in the NIH, we were often asked about translating our results, our findings, our discoveries, our technologies and knowledge into prevention and treatment strategies to improve the health of the American people. And especially after Congress doubled the NIH budget in a period of five years. So the one piece that was missing, it seems to me, is a school of public health with an urban focus. Urbanization is a reality. An agent of that population that's migrating into the city is another reality. So urbanization and agent are applying pressures and a global force to challenge the public health research enterprise in this nation. So if we want to reduce pain and suffering, we want to reduce healthcare costs, and we want to eliminate disparities in health, we're going to have to prevent diseases. And so I want to congratulate Chancellor Goldstein and his vision to create a school that can make all the difference in the world. And since urbanization is a global issue, what we discover here in New York can serve, can be translated, can be applied around the world. And my job is to bring together the talent in the university at large and in the city, and you represent much of that talent, to bring together the talent in New York to create a world-class school of public health. And with your support, I'm confident that we can do that. And thank you very much.
We'll turn next to the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and the executive session of June twenty-third, two thousand and eight. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting. Books, may I have a second on the minutes?
Second.
Any comments on the minutes or suggested revisions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and it's carried. We'll turn next to our committee reports. May I call on trustee Joe Loda for a report from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on September third. There were no action items, however, the committee received a comprehensive budget report from Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave. The Vice Chancellor reviewed budget developments since we last met in June, and he reported on Governor Patterson's call for a fifty-point-six million dollar, dollars in additional budget reductions and spending reductions for the university's senior colleges to help close the growing state budget gap. Vice Chancellor Malave outlined the university's strategy in managing the fifty-point-six-million-dollar mid-year reduction for the senior colleges that would, was needed to be enacted by the govern because of the request of the governor and the legislature. He disclosed how CUNY had prepared to meet mid-year budget challenges and was thus able to substantially mitigate the impact on the colleges to no more than eighteen-point-six million dollars. As a result, CUNY is able to preserve its core academic and student support services. Vice Chancellor Malave also reported that Albany, that the Albany budget agreement largely spared the community colleges from the reductions. However, he warned that the city of New York is also dealing with difficult budget challenges, and CUNY, in the CUNY community, would most likely be facing further budget reductions later this year. I'd like to commend the Vice Chancellor and his staff for the publication of a budget bulletin called Financial Disclosure, that I believe was sent to everyone on the board, and one that we, members of the committee, found very informative, providing important information and data to the trustees in a timely manner as to what's going on, both in Albany and at City Hall. Finally, Mr. Chairman, the committee received a report from Janet Crone, the university's chief investment officer, on the university's investment portfolio, and plans to have our new investment consultants, Cambridge Associates, meet with the board's investment committee at its next scheduled meeting on October sixth. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Program and Research. May I call on trustee Wellington Chen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this June meeting, the committee approved five policy matters. Calendar number three A, College BS in Pharmaceutical Sciences. This program prepares graduates for career in the pharmaceutical, chemical, cosmetics, and related industries, as well as provides a solid foundation for graduate studies in the science or medicine. Students will benefit from the existing collaboration with the Northeast, Napvile Observatory of the Food and Drug Administration, House on the York Campus. Calendar number three B, Lehman College, MS in Business. Building on the success of Lehman's existing graduate programs, undergraduate programs in business, this graduate program aims to help business professionals to enrich their academic background. In contrast to a general business management curriculum traditionally emphasized in an MBA program, this MS program provides specialist-oriented graduate education and allows students to focus on one functional area of business. Currently, three specializations are being offered: finance, marketing, or HR management. Calendar number three C, Lehman College BS in Exercise Science. This program equips students with skills and competencies for entry-level jobs in exercise science, physical fitness and wellness, or community health education. Calendar number three D, the College of Staten Island, MA in Mental Health Counseling. This program will prepare students for licensure as mental health counselors in accordance with recently mandated requirements in the state of New York. It has been developed in response to the needs of the local community, as well as high student demand. Calendar number three E, Ostos Community College, AS in Accounting. The proposed program provides pathways for community college students to pursue further education and careers in accounting, auditing, as well as financial operations and management fields. Graduates will be prepared for entry-level bookkeeping and accounting jobs, as well as for continuing in a baccalaureate program. Items number three A through three E were approved by the committee, and I recommend their approval by the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Doctor Morales?
Yes, as I have indicated during the Capitol meeting, I fully support the program in counseling, and I congratulate Dr. Morales for offering the community of Staten Island this needed program. I personally feel that mental health is not a priority for many people. I don't think people realize how disabling mental illness can be, costing hundreds of millions of dollars, and disabling high percentage of our community. I really feel that this program should be duplicated in many of our colleges. Mental health is a necessity, and we, and we have to face it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Other comments or any questions for the committee? Yes?
I'd just like to offer my congratulations to our colleges for expanding the opportunities that our graduates will have after graduation by embarking on these master's programs.
Thank you very much. Further comments? Are you ready? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed, abstentions? Those carried. Anything further to report, trustee?
Yes, informational items. Interim Executive Vice Chancellor Logue also presented two information items to the committee. Item one C dash one, the Community Law School, Center on Latino-Latina Rights and Equality. The mission of the center is to promote legal research and scholarship on issues concerning Latinos and Latinas. It will support faculty research projects and curriculum development on issues that affect the Latino community. Item one C dash two, informational item, additional summer developments and looking ahead. Interim Executive Vice Chancellor Logue provided a brief update on a number of university initiatives. The NYCHA has completed its registration, actions permitting Hunter College to offer the doctor of public health degree jointly with the graduate school for City and Hunter Colleges, to offer doctor degrees in the natural sciences, biology, biochemistry, chemistry, and physics jointly with the graduate school, and for City College to become the sole CUNY institution of granting doctoral degrees in engineering. Interim Executive Vice Chancellor Logue also provided an update on CUNY Law School Pipeline to Justice Program. This is a year-long program that assists promising students who are not admitted to law school in raising their LSAT scores and improving their critical thinking and writing skills. Each year, about twenty students who have completed the program are subsequently admitted to the law school. This program, which is open to people of all backgrounds, helps to increase diversity in the legal profession, one of the professions with the most underrepresentation. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. I'd like to call on trustee Rita Di Martino to report from the committee.
Mr. Chair, the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration met on September third to consider the following items, which we now present to the board for approval. The committee reviewed three resolutions amending the bylaws. They are as follows. Item four A, proposed amendments to Articles six and eleven of the bylaws will resolve three issues. The first creates two new titles, campus schools' college laboratory technician and campus schools' senior college laboratory technician, which are needed to implement an arbitration award. The second amendment resolves an ambiguity that currently exists in Article six, clarifying the non-tenure-bearing status of the title principal in the Hunter College High School and Hunter College Elementary School. The third change updates obsolete language in section, in section eleven point thirty-four by changing Board of Education to Department of Education and deleting reference to the Board of Examiners, which no longer exists. Mr. Chair, I present item four A for the board's approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried.
The committee considered the next two resolutions with a waiver of the provision requiring that a bylaw change be adopted at the next meeting, following that at which it was introduced. The committee recommends that the board waives notice of these items in order to expedite their adoption. Item four B. Item four B, proposed amendments to Article eleven of the bylaws. In January two thousand and seven, the Board of Trustees amended Article eleven of the bylaws to add a series of educational opportunity center instructional titles. At that time, a typographical error was made in the numbering of the sections corresponding to the new titles, resulting in three titles having the same section number. This resolution proposes that these section numbers be corrected. The content of the article is unchanged. Mr. Chair, I present item four B for the board's approval with waiver of notice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Item four C further amends Articles six and eleven of the bylaws to include the new title of clinical professor and updates the position definition of distinguished lecturer. The terms and conditions of employment for these titles have been negotiated with the Professional Staff Congress slash CUNY and will be reflected in the two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten PSC slash CUNY collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Chair, I present item four C for the board's approval with waiver of notice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on this item? Yes, General Counsel Schaefer?
This is an amendment to the bylaws to conform to the latest collective bargaining agreement in the creation of a new position of clinical professor. You have before you a letter from the president of the PSC inquiring as to why certain aspects of the definition of this position are not included in the bylaw. This is really just an editorial judgment. When we define positions within our bylaws, we generally do not include the same level of detail that we have in the collective bargaining agreement. I am confident that the collective bargaining agreement and other materials from the Central Office will make clear that this position of clinical professor, like the position of distinguished lecturer, is a position which is time-limited. And to the extent that there is any confusion at all, which I trust there will not be, there is any confusion at all, which I trust there will not be, we will obviously work with the campuses and with the faculty representatives to clarify the situation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Four C carries.
Item four D is a resolution to amend the governance plan of the Graduate School and University Center to recognize that master's degree programs that are not within existing doctoral programs will be headed by directors. The exception will be the Master of Arts in Liberal Studies program, which will continue to be headed by an executive officer. These revisions are deemed necessary because the governance plan does not address the leadership of freestanding master's degree programs. Mr. Chair, I present item four D for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Carries.
Item four, is that E?
Yes.
Okay. Item four E is a resolution to amend the governance plan of the Borough of Manhattan Community College to address technical issues involving membership, filling of vacancies, and selection of chairpersons for college council committees. The amendment also addresses term of office, scheduling, and the petitioning process. These amendments have been approved by the college council and the president, and the committee recommends their adoption. Mr. Chair, I present item four E for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Items four F and four G are resolutions regarding two namings at Hunter College, which I will present together. More than one million five hundred thousand dollars has been pledged to the Hunter College Foundation to establish and endow the Joan Hansen Grave Dean of the Hunter Bellevue School of Nursing and the Judith and Stanley Zabar Art Library. The committee has reviewed these resolutions and recommends them for the board's approval. Mr. Chair, I present items four F and four G for the board's approval.
I'll second those items. Are there questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry.
Item four H is a resolution naming the ACFE Endowed Professor of Fraud Examination at York College in response to a five hundred thousand dollar pledge by the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, Inc. This gift will create the first endowed faculty position at York College, and the committee is pleased to recommend its approval. Mr. Chair, I present item four H for the board's approval.
I second the item. Are there questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
Mr. Chair, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. May I call on trustee Mark Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered four items at its meeting of September three, two thousand and eight. These action items are listed in the board meeting as calendar items five A through five D. Item five A, resolution authorizing fiscal year two thousand and nine renovation work under the term of the board's budget resolution for, of November twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. This resolution requests authorization to proceed with renovation work scheduled for fiscal year two thousand and nine as part of the facilities planning, construction, and management department's five-year plan for facilities maintenance. It's the first of what will be annual requests for such authorization to proceed with renovation work covered by the board's budget resolution approved November two thousand and seven. Item five B, resolution authorizing the execution of customer installation commitments under the Encore Agreement between CUNY and the New York Power Authority. CUNY and the New York Power Authority through the CUNY Encore Agreement are to develop certain construction projects that campus facilities design to be energy-efficient by reducing energy consumption and production of greenhouse gases. These projects will be implemented through work orders known as customer installation commitments. NIPO will provide financing, program management, and design-built implementation for these projects. Item five C, resolution authorizing a lease of three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of space at Two Metro Tech Center, Brooklyn, on behalf of the CUNY Central Office. By previous resolution, calendar six E approved June twenty-third, two thousand and eight, the board authorized the lease of two thousand, two hundred forty-six, two hundred forty-six thousand square feet at Two Metro Center, on behalf of the Central Office. Since then, the landlord has made available for lease an additional hundred five thousand square feet of space, bringing the total rentable square footage up to approximately three hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Item five D, resolution authorizing the lease of one hundred eighty-one thousand square feet of space at thirty dash twenty Thompson Avenue, Long Island City, on behalf of La Guardia Community College. The college currently occupies leased space at forty-five thirty-five Van Damme Street. The lease is set to expire in April two thousand and nine, and new space has been identified at thirty dash twenty Thompson Avenue, which will accommodate the college's growing need for classroom space and provide an already-built-out classroom installation. A portion of the new space will be available for occupancy in April two thousand and nine, with the remaining square footage available at a later date. Mr. Chairman, I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you. I'm happy to second those. Are there questions for the committee? Professor Philip?
Just I'd like to comment that I look forward to future resolutions that would include the reconstruction, completion of the reconstruction of Fidman Hall at Borough of Manhattan Community College.
We all look forward to that. Other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those items carry. Anything further to report?
That concludes the report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move the award of the honorary degrees that are listed in your meeting books at page seventeen. May I have a second on those awards?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those carry. Calendar item number seven, which is page seventeen as well, starting there, serves as the notice of actions taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on July twenty-first, two thousand and eight, on three items recommended by the chancellor. These are listed as items seven A, seven B, and seven C. On your calendar, under our procedure, we make these items known to the board at the first subsequent meeting, but we need not act on those. This concludes the business for the first public meeting of today. I'm going to adjourn this public meeting. We'll go into an executive session, and we may well re-convene in public following that. Thank you very much.